Started?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay, great. Oh, uh. Is Nana on the call?
Yeah, okay. Mr. Cassianas?
Yeah, I think I'm dialed in two places because there's a, there's a feedback coming.
Ms. Ms. Capola?
Nana, I think you're, are you, are you connected to two places? Are you want to call, uh, you're, you're echoing through?
Turn off. Okay. It says okay.
I just put you on mute again. It, 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 Nana, it sounds like maybe you're, you're dialed in in two places. So when you unmute yourself as an echo.
How do I do that?
Are you using a phone?
No.
Yeah, we're not recording yet either. Okay, we, let's, let's check out with Nana before we get the recording going. If we can.
Yeah.
I can, eh, once we get the recording going and, and, until we can figure, let's try one more time with Nana and then I can do the attendance or have Mary take the attendance if that's
Okay, great.
be a problem. And then, will you want to try and work it through Jared to see if we can?
I'm, I'm afraid to touch anything. I'll probably shut me up somehow.
I'm wondering if it's the Don Hesse because he, he has, uh, volume on. Do you think that could be the reason why we're getting feedback?
Um. I, we haven't interacted with that before. I, I can, you can see where the feedback comes from because the, the speaker starts to move. Um.
Actually, no, actually it's not because it, no, it only happens with Nana. She should sign out and sign back in.
Yeah, okay.
He's listed twice. Yeah, Nancy's on here twice.
Oh, good. There you go.
That's probably, that's what it is. Yeah.
She has to turn off one of them. I don't know if.
The second one.
On the.
One is muted.
Jared, can you just delete her?
Yeah, I just want to do that.
Is it on now? Yeah, there it is.
All right. How's that? Can you hear us, Nan?
I can hear you.
All right, great.
All right, good job. Okay, are we ready to record? We'll get started?
Yes.
This conference, this conference is no longer being recorded.
Great. Okay. All right, so.
This conference will now be recorded.
Great. Okay, great. Uh. So, um, as, as we start here, we can, we will confirm con, attendance. So, uh.
Mr. Cassianas?
Right.
Cassianas? Yes?
Present, yes. Here.
Capola? Yes, Mr. Ford?
Listen.
Ms. Gately?
Yes, present.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Yes. Mr. Sadoway?
Present.
And Ma'am McGee?
Present.
Okay.
And it could also take, um, attendance of, uh, the others who are on the call to be part of this. Dr. Tuttwiler?
Present.
Deputy Ruggiero?
Present.
Deputy Powers?
Present.
Kevin McHugh?
Present.
Attorney Mahos?
Present.
Uh, School Committee Secretary Mary Jewels?
Present.
Uh. Okay, we're ready to, uh, so again, this is Mayor Tom McGee and I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us. This open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted remote, remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly, publicly accessible location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to, uh, pub, participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the city website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberation of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lynn School Department is convening by telephone conference, uh, conference, video conference via, via the GoToMeeting platform as posted on the city's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you and to take care not to screenshot your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recorder. Uh, we are now turning to, uh, business ground rules, uh, the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, uh, let me cover some of the ground rules for effective and clear conduct for our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As the chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will get on the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote, vote taken in this meeting will be co, conducted by a roll call. With that, we'll go to, uh, begin the meeting. This is the 11th regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being held on Thursday, June 11th, uh, 2020 at 6:00 PM via GoToMeeting platform. Uh, and the order of business, uh, I'd ask everyone, I do have a flag. Here, I don't know if there's a flag that's also, uh, on the, uh, if Dawn has a flag there, but I do have a flag behind me and I'll ask everyone to stand and join me with a salute to the flag and then stay, um, standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Stephen Winterstein, a retired teacher on May 28th, passed away on May 28th of 2020. Thank you. Um. We, our first on the agenda is appointments and elections. Uh, Superintendent, uh, Tuttwiler, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, I would. Thank you very much. Uh, there's one. Uh, on, uh, June 1st, uh, we appointed April Reed, uh, to the position of payroll and accounts payable manager. Uh, April has been with the district for a number of years and has done an incredible job uh, in the payroll office and we're, we're thrilled to appoint her to this role. Uh, so I publicly congratulate her and I know she's going to do a great job.
Great. Congratulations, um, to April and welcome aboard. That's great. Next on the agenda is, uh, approval of dual language and general education SEI kindergarten report card.
May I, ma'am?
Yes, Dr. Tuttwiler, please.
Uh, and just quickly, and, uh, Rania Caldwell from the, uh, English Learner Education, um, offices, uh, here to sort of walk the committee through the, the report card, but I just want to quickly celebrate her and, and her team. Um, they have worked extraordinarily hard, uh, to keep the momentum going on the dual language program. Uh, they've done outreach, uh, they've done, uh, for lack of better expression, marketing around the program and, um, one important piece of the development is creating a report card that reflects, um, the structure and function of the program. Uh, so I'm going to turn it over to her and let her, uh, talk a little bit about it and some features in it that we're, uh, expanding, uh, to other, um, kindergarten classes or would like to.
Great.
Go ahead, Rania.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Um, I also have with me, uh, the Assistant Director of ELE, Amanda Campbell. Uh, she's going to also talk a little bit about the process that we went through with the report card. Um, first, uh, thank you all. I just wanted to, um, uh, I'm excited to share our proposed kindergarten report card for both our dual language classroom and our kindergarten classrooms in the Lynn Public Schools. Um, the report cards were a result of a lengthy process in terms of researching, um, standards-based report cards, which we have looked to move towards in the district for, for a number of years. Um, and dual language presented that opportunity. Um, and in that process with dual language, it made a natural connection to our other kindergarten classrooms, which we'll explain as we discuss our process. Um, so I'm going to quickly turn it over to Amanda. She's going to describe, um, the process of the dual language report cards and how it kind of lent itself to, um, expanding it to the entire kindergarten population in the Lynn Public Schools.
Hey, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. Um, as Rania mentioned, I'm going to share a little bit about the process that was undertaken to create these draft report cards, um, which we're really excited about. We had a great group of educators working really diligently on them and we're really proud of the results. Um, so back in October, as Rania mentioned, this all began with our dual language program because our students in the dual language program will be taught to read in Spanish first and because the curriculum maps for the dual language program are structured differently. We knew that we would need a different report card for that program, not just a translation of the current one. So, uh, we brought together a team of classroom teachers, ESL teachers, our new dual language kindergarten teachers, and some district administrators. As Rania mentioned, we started reading research around standards-based report cards and effective implementation. We wanted to be sure that everybody really understood the end goal, which was that standards-based report cards differ, um, from more traditional ones in really key way in that in traditional report cards, multiple standards are lumped together, uh, which can make it hard to give parents accurate feedback about, um, specific areas where a child might be excelling or needing some additional support. Um, but that in a standards-based report card, they're separated out by standard. So we really wanted to go over that with the team and make sure they understood what the end goal was. From there, we reviewed standards-based report cards from districts all around the country. Uh, for example, we looked at report cards from California, Colorado, Texas, New York, North Carolina, and many others. Uh, we looked at everything from overall style to formatting to the very specific wording of the standards. Uh, while we looked at this, one of the most important things we wanted to make sure was that it was easy for parents and guardians to look at and get information about their child's progress. Um, from there, we also looked at whether it was easy to use for teachers and how teachers would be able to organize data and collect artifacts for each standard. So from there, we kind of created like a, a must-have list and we built a draft. So then from there, a question that came up a lot was, well, hey, this is a pretty great report card. Couldn't we use this for all of our kindergarten classrooms? So from there, we put together another team, um, this time made up of SEI kindergarten teachers and principals and we reviewed the draft that the previous team had created. Um, we made some adjustments from their suggestions, but overall, it was pretty clear that everyone was really excited about the prospect of a new report card. So separately, we also had our content area experts in the curriculum office review the draft, um, confirming things like priority standards. Um, we also had smaller teams of teachers working on things like social justice standards, our Spanish literacy standards, and, um, a way to show language development and progress towards language proficiency. So, all the results of that hard work is right in front of you. So I'm going to turn it over to Rania to kind of give you an overview of the different components for SEI and the dual language.
Thank you. And I do just want to note, one thing that became clear when we looked at standards-based report cards was that some of them were like six pages long, for example, and as Amanda said, we know we wanted it to be teacher-friendly, family-friendly. Um, so we were, um, we almost picked the perfect pieces for what would meet our students, teachers, and families' needs and, uh, maneuvered them into this document that you see here. Um, so, um, on the kindergarten report card, uh, the general ed one, and there are lots of similar components, so I might sort of toggle between the two documents. Both of them are two pages, so we plan to print them front and back for ease of, um, distribution. Um, we started with the performance indicators and the, the committee decided that the, the one to four indicators really gave parents, um, indication of where their students were meeting a standard and also gave the opportunity for students who were exceeding a standard to also be noted um, on the report card. There's also a not applicable, um, indicator that if a particular standard wasn't assessed or addressed during that particular trimester, then the NA indicator would be noted. Um, so that parents didn't think that it was missing or, um, anything like that. Uh, we also had, um, a member of the Special Education Office as part of our committee work and, um, in that, we wanted to, um, have some indication on the report card for students who, um, are meeting those performance indicators, but are doing so based on, um, their IEP, uh, goals. So we added the asterisk. So students, for example, who are meeting those ex, uh, experiences, those learning experiences and standards would receive a three asterisks, for example. And that would be a drop-down menu, um, in the report card to note that for parents. So parents would know that they're meeting those expectations with the provided, um, accommodations of their IEP. Um, on the first page, we have, you know, your basic demographic information and, and attendance, um, and then we have English Language Arts um, and mathematics on the general ed report card and Spanish Language Arts and Mathematics on the Dual Language Report Card. Um, the major distinction obviously being between ELA and SLA. Um, the format is the same, but we just emphasize different skills because kids learn to read differently in Spanish than they do to learn to read in English. Um, but the highlighted skills and the subsets of skills, um, are still, are similar. Um, and we focused on that prioritization of those skills that kids need to have in order to be successful to go to first grade. And then on the backside of the report card, um, the report cards are, are similar. Um, we, as Amanda mentioned, included, um, social justice standards initially on the dual language report card and those social justice standards come from the teaching tolerance, social justice standards. And where that stemmed from was that third pillar in dual language, which is fo, focused on socio-cultural competence. We have incorporated in our dual language curriculum, those standards within our units. Um, so they are, um, skills and focus areas in every unit of study in our dual language curriculum and we wanted to highlight those skills, um, in the report card as well. Um, so rather than having those general student indicators that aren't academic related, we focus them on social justice because, you know, we recognize, we want our students to exhibit these types of behaviors as they go through our, our program and our schools. And then, um, we added science and social studies standards, um, focusing on specific standards. Um, we saw many report cards that simply say, "Science. Enjoy science." And we didn't think that that was good enough. So we wanted, again, we want our families and our students to not only see these skills in school, but be able to see one of those skills and say, "Oh, I see that when I go outside. I see that in the spring. I see that in my neighborhood." Um, so we wanted to give those specific skills for those particular content areas. Um, and then finally, we have, um, brief, um, indicators for the arts, including art, music, uh, physical education, and technology to incorporate those skills as well. And then the final piece, um, as Amanda mentioned, is language development. So on your Spanish, on your dual language report card, you have language development um, for Spanish and English because our kids will be developing both languages. And on the general education side, you'll have, um, um, English language development for students who are identified as English learners. So that would only apply to identified English learners. Um, this actually, um, is a requirement by law that we inform parents um, of our students', uh, progress towards language development for our English learners. So putting it on the report card satisfies that, satisfies that from a compliance perspective. But it also gives our families, again, information about where their student is um, in terms of language development and how they're accessing grade-level content. So for that section, we've developed, as Amanda mentioned, there was a separate team. Um, so, uh, teachers will have a drop-down menu, for example, and they'll be able to indicate in each domain, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, if students are a one, a two, a three, a four, or five, depending on their proficiency. And there'll be a description attached to that in terms of what the student can do based on their language proficiency. So that parents know sort of this is where they are in speaking in their English language development. And then that will, um, you know, we see that those levels increasing as students are in our schools for longer periods of time. And finally, there are three boxes on both report cards for teachers to have comments um, and to indicate comments for students. Um, and the intention for the comments will be for those comments to be a drop-down menu so that there'll be, um, standard comments for teachers to give parents and it also allows for the easy ability to translate those comments so that all of our families have equitable access to, uh, reading those comments about their children in their home language. And that's pretty much the summary of the report card, um, and so, and its components and the process. Um, we'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any thoughts that people have.
Great. Questions? Uh. Member Gately?
Rania, the only thing, like in the first, second, and third quarter on both of them, because I am not a kindergarten teacher. I understand that you have the drop-down box, you can put the numbers, and then you can drop down box for standard comments, but what about the grades themselves in those first, second, and third? What will it be? Like a proficient one? Like how it, I don't see it on this report card, so I don't know how, what the grading system is for one, for the first quarter, the second, sec, first trimester, second, and third.
Okay. Um, so it would be based on those performance indicators on that right-hand side. So students would range from a one to a four in terms of not yet meeting those expectations and having difficulty all the way to the four, which is exceeding learning expectations. And the learning expectation itself would be the standard. So if students are doing that work, um, they would get that scale from one to four.
Okay. I see it now. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that presentation. Um, also thank you to everyone who worked on this. It sounds like, uh, you led a really comprehensive process, uh, that looked at best practices and, and brought in some, some great team perspectives from, uh, from around the district, which is, which is terrific. So thank you to those who worked on it and all the people that you brought in to, to help you with this. I, I think it's, I think it's really exciting. I mean, I think the standards-based approach makes a ton of sense. Uh, I can definitely see that this would be really useful, uh, for families to, to understand, uh, what, what their children are working on and what they, what they can help their children, um, you know, try, using that standard, standard-based, uh, vocabulary to, to, to help reinforce what they're learning and, and I think that's, I think that's fantastic. Um. How, is it, is, is, are these standards, um, along those lines, would they be sort of communicated to parents maybe like ahead of time, like this is what we're going to be looking for in, in students? And, and will that be done in different languages so that, you know, uh, to the, to the sort of idea of getting people to use common vocabulary around the standards that, that, that parents who's, uh, who aren't speaking English at home are, are, can, can comprehend and look for these, these skills as well?
I mean, I'll, I'll comment on that. Um, typically, the, the first open house of, uh, now next year, we're going to have to talk about that. But, um, the first open house is typically, uh, come in, parents come in and they're given kind of what you can expect for this year for your child to learn and how, uh, you can help at home, how we can help you kind of conversation, that first open house. So ideally, that first open house would be where you would hear the, you know, the language in the report card, the change, um, you know, give them the standards that they can see what they'll be looking. We just have to figure out, you know, what does that look like next year in a, whatever, the blended, you know, virtual, whatever, you know, modality.
Got it. So would, so would these report cards, the end, be, be translated?
Yes, yes. It's typical practice that we would translate, um, our report cards into the most common languages in the district and have those available to our families.
And then so we would just need to figure out how to do that with social distancing or whatever to make it available remotely. Got it. Okay, thank you. That's great. Thank you so much.
Any questions? Member, uh, Sadoway?
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, I just have, um, one, uh, pretty generalized question. Um, so obviously this is the starting point of, of this program, um, in Harrington and we're, we're hoping to expand it as the grade levels go up. Um. These are going to be the foundations, but they'll expand them assuming as time goes along? Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the team actually worked together. That's, that's exactly what they did. Go ahead, Rania.
Yeah, I was going to say in terms of the skills themselves, um, the standards, you know, every year increase in, in complexity. Um, and then as I think Deb was about to mention, every year we will sort of, sort of continue looking at those prioritized standards that the kids will focus on um, and, you know, work towards a report card that symbolizes that.
Good, because I, I, I like that it's, it's, it's really, um, there's a focus on steam as well here. We have the, the science, which is great, and then you have art and, and, and using technology and all that stuff. So I'm, I'm hopeful that as the grades go up, it's not just going to be based off of that one line for technology or one line for music or art. I love that you have the social justice standards and some of the, even the social studies kind of align with that as well. Um, so it's, it's definitely a great start and I appreciate it. Thank you.
The challenge with it as it goes up is to not have it be six pages long like California's was. Um, so as we go up, we're going to have to look at, you know, are there power standards that we can combine? Are there, you know, standards that we can collapse into one instead, you know, instead of it being two different ones that we want? Um, but that, our goal is to, each year, let's get the next report card, uh, standard space so that we eventually have the most.
Right. And I'll also add that, um, in this kindergarten report card particularly, those foundational skills really take up a lot of space, um, on the report card. Um, but those are foundational. That's why they, they're foundational skills for kindergarten. So those skills diminish or decrease as the grades go up so that in essence, we'll create more space for other standards to be added.
Thank you.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Member Ford?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say I think it's a great report card. Uh, for kindergarten level, it's a great, very thorough. And I'm particularly happy to see the social justice and the social studies issues being addressed. I think it's very timely and I think it's a good, a good place to start.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Great. Well, thank you so much. I don't, I don't see that, uh, there's any other questions from the members. Uh, I want to thank you both. Great presentation, great work on putting that together.
Thank you so much.
Exciting. Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Thanks. Take care.
Need a roll call?
Uh. Do we, is this to accept it?
Yes.
Yeah, make a motion.
That's, yep. Motion, uh, Member, uh, Member Nicholson. Motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Uh, he has seconds. Uh, roll call, um, is required.
Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
Ms. Capola? Ms. Capola? Donna? Ms. Capola, can you hear me? Okay, let's hear. Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
And Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
C, yes.
And then, Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Okay, pass.
Great, okay, thank you. Uh next on the agenda is update on summer programming, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Yes, sir, happy to, uh it's, uh just to be clear, do we lose a member before I dive into this?
No, uh, member Capola is on, um.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
We could see her saying yes, uh.
Oh, okay, okay, well, yeah, I can't see anything, I'm I'm listening intently though. Uh so I I just wanted to share a little bit uh more about our summer learning effort, uh it is uh taking um. Uh pretty definitive shape, uh and with the school year ending. Uh on the eighteenth, uh I just wanted to give an update as to where we are, um. Uh, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uh has released guidance on summer learning. Uh that does allow for some in-person experiences toward the end of the summer. But I wanna be clear that all of our summer learning plans are uh will happen. Uh exclusively in the remote format. Uh the plans are divided into two categories. The first with which I think most are already familiar is the summer school for credit recovery. We'll be offering that to middle and high school students who need it free of charge this year. Uh we'll be leveraging the Apex online course resources we typically do. Uh and then we're also uh in the process of developing some core courses locally. The local courses uh will be developed for levels one and two English learners. For whom Apex is not a viable source, resource. The second category is anchored in enrichment, engagement and remediation. Here, we're focused broadly on the core contents of literacy, uh English language acquisition for English learners. And mathematics. We will also continue to provide programming for students on individual uh individualized education plans. To meet the goals in their individual plan. Um relative to the extended year program, that's the special education program for students on an IEP. Uh to be clear, this is a highly individualized program that is focused on supporting students toward meeting the goals. In their identified plan. That program will continue as it always has, but virtually this summer. We will, we will be providing all students with summer reading. We've chosen appropriate texts by grade spans, pre-K to one, two to three. Four to five, six to eight and nine to twelve. Grade band teams came together to search titles for summer reading that would be engaging and uplifting. Offering both enjoyment and a feeling of hope. Teams also wanted titles that would be accessible to all students. A set of activities has been created and students will choose a few to deepen their understanding of what they've read. As you might imagine, the supply lines are a little bit tricky at this time. We expect to receive the books in July, uh and will devise a plan for distribution uh at that time. We'll also be providing uh mathematics enrichment. I'm thrilled to announce that we will be launching a new enrichment and remediation resource for all elementary students. Using a program called Spatial Temporal Math, or ST Math. ST Math is a pre-K to eight visual instructional program. That leverages the brain's innate spatial temporal reasoning ability to solve mathematical problems. Essentially, it's gaming, um that is anchored in uh mathematical skills and functions. Their approach provides students with equitable access to learning through challenging puzzles. Non-routine problem, problem solving and informative feedback. With ST Math, students build deep conceptual understanding and there's data to back it up. The One Eight Foundation has stepped up to provide ST Math at no cost. To Massachusetts schools for this summer and into the twenty twenty-one school year. To help prevent what is known as the summer slide, where students lose information or skills taught during, during the summer months. ST Math has recommended a number, a a number of ninety, a number of minutes for student use. Kind, kindergartners and first graders will be one hour per week in grades two and up are ninety minutes per week. In an effort to provide enrichment for math and mathematics for students in grade six through eleven. We're expat, current grade six through eleven, I should be clear, we're expanding the number of licenses in IXL. IXL is an adaptive online math program. We use, we've used it with success in high school for a number of, uh, a number of years. We're expanding it to the middle school as well uh for this summer enrichment. Uh we expect that program to be available in July. The mathematics programs require technology. Device distribution has already begun prioritizing the elementary levels first. And we'll pivot to secondary immediately thereafter. Finally, uh the English learner teachers and coaches worked in grade span teams to create two sets of thematic menus. Nature and Around the World. Both Nature and Around the World align with similar themes in the National Geographic. Reach and Inside ESL resources that students use at school. These are familiar themes that allow students to build on existing background knowledge while supporting their English language development. For each theme, there is an A menu and a B menu. The A menu is for early proficiency students and the B menu is for levels three and four. In addition to the thematic activities, there are summer reading activities on each menu. Currently, the English learner education department is finalizing plans. For an online platform where students and families can direct their questions and feedback, share completed work. And join in in uh virtual office hours with an ESL teacher. Um so that is, that is our, our, um, you know, at a high level, our approach to providing students um. Uh engagement and enrichment uh over the summer, um sort of keep their minds uh sharp academically. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Member Castellanos, thank you, Dr. Pala. Member Castellanos has a question.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, so I just, um, thank you for um sharing it with us. So I have a question about the, you know, will we have um. You know, social emotional services up and going, will social workers be um. Operating from an engagement outreach perspective, like what are we gonna do for those students that are, you know, very, very at risk during the summertime? I think the transition. Even without remote learning is difficult, so having summer school um. Through the recovery, I know Apex recover, uh credit recovery is pretty useful, um but sometimes, uh I know I had students. That I I know that you would go to Lynn Classical, use the computers that, to do the Apex there, but. What are we doing to um to engage in outreach for the summer?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work, I'll work backwards, uh essentially what, and this, this, just to be clear, the, the credit recovery. Uh piece is still being finalized, but essentially what happened in the brick and mortar buildings, classical and English. For uh Apex uh online coursework, um will, will be done at home and we're. Uh we're planning to make available uh as a resource and support for students. Teachers probably um in the same way the ESL um. Uh support is structured um with office hours. Um so a- a- again, that's not yet been finalized, but we will give students the device. Um support them in getting set up uh with the access. Uh and then we'll provide them uh support with Lynn Public Schools teachers uh virtually. Uh the other, the other question about uh social emotional supports. Um, you know, re- really, we're, we have to remember that, you know, we, we are, uh, we've gotta live by uh the contract. And uh social workers are part of the uh teachers' union and and don't necessarily have. Um, you know, there, there isn't necessarily a summer program um for them. Uh so we're pivoting to working with our partners and connecting families um with our local partners to ensure that. You know, should a need arise, that there are supports immediately available for families, um. We're also um beginning to take steps looking ahead to next year. Um with respect to professional development, cuz we know that that's gonna be. A big piece of our effort next year, social emotional support, not only directly through. Um what a social worker uh would provide in terms of supports, but also um individual classroom teachers. Um we've got a social emotional learning curriculum at the elementary level, a caring school. Um and PD for that i- is being lined up uh over the summer for for teachers right now. I don't know if um Deputy Superintendent Bajiro, and I'm sorry, Powers, wanted to say anything additionally, but I.
Yes.
Yeah. In terms of the summer school historically, um Tina Hofnagle has been connected to that. It, for students who have needed SEL support or services. I just wanted you to be aware that there is, there is somebody who does provide services for that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Uh, member Sadoway?
Thank you, Patrick, for the update, um so my, I have a question uh based off of a lot of feedback that I got today. Um and um earlier this week, so um the students have been picking up their caps and gowns. Um and their diplomas, but now some students are only getting. Um I think a certificate of attendance or some sort of uh paper that says that they're not moving along. Um, wha- what are we doing uh to accommodate these students to make sure that um. Uh we can get them br- on the right track to to graduate, or to get a diploma at least?
So uh, well, there, there's, there's two scenarios there, both of which um are sort of state uh driven. Um a student who would receive a certificate of attendance is a student who's typically. Um in a special education program and not uh able to meet the competency determination, meaning. Um they would not take or 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 pass an MCAS exam. Um or the, meet the MCAS requirements, so those students. Uh we, you know, get a certificate of uh of attendant. The students who receive the letter, um that's part of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education process, they're requiring. Uh schools and all of this, you know. It, this is part of the evolution of like how things are um working uh at at the present moment, present moment. Um they're requiring um all school districts who have students who did not. Uh have the opportunity to um take or pass uh the MCAS uh due to the closure, uh who are seniors. Um they're allowing them to um, you know, essentially certify that they passed. Um coursework that uh reflects the standard that would be in the MCAS exams that they missed. Um, we can certainly say, sure, a student passed biology, therefore they have satisfied the requirement. By the state's uh definition um in this context for biology, for the science MCAS. But they, they want to certify that themselves, we actually have to send them. Um the information and they, they're not uh allowing us to give diplomas until they've. They've certified that the student has met the requirements, and so um. You know, this is a, a, a relatively small group of students, and of course, we care deeply about them. But we gave them a letter that essentially says, you're going to be fine, you're all set, we just have to wait for that certification from the state. Before we can give you an actual uh diploma. Those are the two scenarios you're looking at.
Okay, thank you. Uh, member Nicholson?
Thank you, thank you for that update, Dr. Tuttwiler, um so given that we are. Doing the remote learning opportunities all remotely, uh where do we stand as to the, the sort of technology distribution? Are we, people are gonna, who wanna be participating in the uh remote offerings will be able to do so. Regardless of their current access to technology?
Um, this is an all kind of situation, for example, right now, we're focused on. You know, initially, we began with a prioritized uh approach, um. Uh students, seniors who needed to satisfy graduation requirements, early college students, AP, uh. Student, advanced placement students who needed to take the exam uh virtually, uh and all students on an IEP. Um we're now pivoting to um all students, um. Uh for example, uh for the ST Math program, uh it's an elementary-based program. Um, we're focused on all current grades two, uh three and four, who will be. Three, four and five next year, um getting a device, and so principals uh in partnership with the IT um. Side uh have been working in earnest uh to communicate, to get families to go to the uh. The, the pickup sites based on the schedule that we've developed. So this is an all approach, uh it's not like, hey, if you, only if you need one, we're, we're, we're attempting to get a device. Um, in, in, in all of the students' hands, grade three through uh current two through eleven.
Great, and then you mentioned the, the summer slide and 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 the attempts to. Uh address that, obviously, we're dealing with a elongated period of time where students haven't been in school longer than just this summer. Um. Are you, uh, do, do, is the, is the, the summer learning opportunities, are they? Uh, have they been set up to, to be able for, for, for families to, who, who complete them? To feel like they are gonna be in a position um closer to where they would have otherwise been had the. Schools not closed down, are, are those, are there, is there that kind of uh curriculum for the summer, um? Particularly for, if we're finding if there's any students uh who. Aren't advancing, who might otherwise have advanced to the next grade level, if those, if those. Uh opportunities in this summer for them to, to make up that work.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's an excellent question, of all the questions are excellent, that's to be clear, um. But, but y- y- you know, this summer learning effort isn't necessarily designed. It would have to be much, much uh more intense to address the kind of scenario that you're describing. Um and, and quite frankly, um you know, a big piece of, of uh addressing, um. You know, what it is that students lost entails actually understanding what it is that they lost. Um, you know, there needs to be a very really significant assessment initiative to, to even find out how much, I mean, right now. Um, y- you know, it's, it's, it's an educated guess, I mean, we are. Um, you know, e- everybody that's written, uh, you know, sort of intelligently about what they believe has happened. You know, it's a little bit of a guess, um that, you know, students have lost that direct instruction, we know that. Um nothing beats, you know, in-person direct instruction, not, not virtual, not, not, you know, anything else. We know that there's been a slide, how much, I don't know. Our effort this summer uh i- is really designed to keep students engaged, keep them reading. Uh keep them practicing through the uh ST Math uh program, which actually will allow us to collect. Some data, as will the IXL Math Program on the secondary level, um. But really, um, this is an engagement effort. And um, you know, late summer, early fall, like, we're really gonna need to be hyper-focused on. Assessing exactly where students are and then tailoring an effort to uh to address that going forward.
And is that, is that late summer, early fall, because that's when we would be in a position to be able to. Implement those assessments and and the curriculum that they would suggest that we need to have in place to close the gaps that we've identified?
I, I mean, that, that, that's the hope.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Any other members' questions? Who has a question, I'm sorry? Oh, okay, all right, we'll move on to the next, thank you, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Is um update from uh Jesse on summer and fall planning, Dr. Tuttwiler again, do you want to um? Uh give us the updates on that?
Yep, absolutely, uh it's, it's actually uh more on the fall than it is on the summer, um. And, you know, I, I, a memo was sent out um this week to staff and to families, but I. I just wanna give you a quick snapshot uh of where we stand. Um, uh as has been shared in. Um, uh, as has been shared in previous meetings, uh, we're working in earnest to prepare ourselves uh to the extent that we can uh for next year. Uh, I just mentioned that memo with the families and with the staff. Uh, that memo outlined at a high level the thinking and values in which we, in which the planning is anchored. Um, we've established four pillars and lead staff for the planning that needs to be done. Communication and governance, typical plans and health operations, student learning and growth with equity, and social emotional health. Some of this work has begun in earnest. For example, we have already begun to research and order health and safety supplies we will need for next year. Guidance on that very topic came out uh last Friday, uh, which will help us going for, for, forward. Further, we have taken significant steps in the planning uh on social emotional health. Some of the existing structures need only to be adapted. Lastly, um, there's a letter going out to assemble the advisory team, which will begin work with me the week of June twenty-second. As everyone knows, it's exceedingly difficult to plan when we don't know what the guidance on reopening will be and we don't necessarily know what our budget will be. Uh, nonetheless, we're taking every step possible, given what we do know. Uh, as the memo indicates, we expect to know more about the guidance for the reopening uh next week is what I'm told. Uh, most of that guidance will be prescriptive, which means it's not actually guidance, it's more like regulation. Um, with that in hand, uh, the established and the teams established, we can move more quickly to form a plan. Our goal is to have it substantially complete by the middle of July, July fifteenth. I'd say just remind everyone to keep in mind that there are many, many details that must be tended to in order for us to pull this together. Once the plan is substantially complete, we will then quickly begin plans for professional development and any alter, alterations or improvements that need to be made to physical spaces that will be used. There's a lot to be done, but if there's any team in whom I have the, have confidence to get it done, it's ours. Uh, there are so many questions that are really challenging to answer at this point. I'm asking everyone to join with me in moving to a place of comfort with the response of, I don't know. Certainly, as information becomes known or as plans take shape, uh, we'll make certain that staff and family are informed. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about our, our look ahead to the planning.
Okay, and I just ask anyone uh who's not speaking, uh, mute their, uh, mute their phones or their computers. Uh, first question's from member Castellano.
Dr. Tuttwiler, thank you so much um for the insight. Uh, so the fall, the four pillars that you've identified, uh, those are, I, I really do appreciate the SEL, um, the communication piece. Um, going back to just, um, we don't know what those parameters are yet, and, and I understand that we have to wait for the state. Um, so what has the district done to basically, how, how has, are, are we looking to enhance our partnerships? Have we done an analysis if we're gonna be relying on, kinda, if we have to explore into that realm of not heavily relying on L P D, uh, Lynn Public Schools? Are we gonna do an analysis for partnerships? Are we gonna look at to, as we have partnerships now, are we looking to expand and have those ready? Cause I, I know if we go back into a remote setting, I know you guys are, are being mindful of something like that was to occur again, are we, are we gonna start exploring those relationships? I know we have them now, but are you guys meeting with um some of the providers and partners around them already?
Uh, I appreciate that question, uh, member Castellano. So um, that advisory team that I spoke of earlier, um, r- really that is both, um, I intend for that group to be helpful in terms of giving feedback as plans take shape, but it, it, the membership is also intentional and functional. Uh, I'm intending to invite uh some of the, the partners with whom we work closely, uh, after-school care providers, um, Lynn Community Health, a representative from there, folks that we, that we partner with closely so that as these plans take shape and then as I'm talking about it with them and getting their feedback, we can also uh explore opportunities for partnerships for the benefit or, or uh reshaping the partnership for the benefit of the families. Um, I've already uh through the Education District, uh, which includes, you know, organizations like the Y, uh, Boys and Girls Club, Leo, um, I've been in steady touch with um, with the leads for those organizations since March. Um, as a matter of fact, we've got a call set up with the YMCA, um, or I do on Monday. And so um, w- we've been comparing notes, talking about how each other is opening up, um, you know, to some degree thought partnering on, on what our relationship would look like next year. Um, but I will say, it's really hard to have those conversations when you don't know the rules of the game. Uh, and so at this point, it's really just been keeping in touch and like high-level conversation. So the quick answer to your, your, your question is yes. Uh, the other thing I just wanna point out, um, you know, I, I didn't, I'm obviously not gonna read the, the memo here, but, but in it, uh, it does talk about the need for us, the Lynn Public Schools, to be better uh at, at um being nimble. You know, we're, we're a big district and um we don't know what's in store for us uh in the fall. There could be another spike, we might need to close, we might need to close one s- a school or schools. And so our thinking uh thus far i- has really embraced that reality. We wanna be ready to provide as optimal a learning and support condition for students as possible. So uh, the purchase of the devices is a big step toward that end for both students and for staff. Um, we are getting closer to identifying a learning management system, which essentially, again, you know, uh, is like Blackboard or Google Classroom or Moodle or Schoology, programs that are uh, you know, and e- expressly designed to allow teachers to teach students virtually. Um, and so, so we're, we're taking those steps now um and, and try to ready, trying to ready ourselves as much as possible, but again, uh, it's hard when you don't know exactly uh the box within which you have to live.
Yeah, 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 I, I thank you so much for just clarifying that, uh, Dr. Tuttwiler. I also wanted to just bring up to um just the attention of dual enrollment. Uh, I know certain, some districts are going into the community colleges, state colleges, to try to figure out um opportunities for college courses, see if this happens again. I know higher ed, they're, they're trying to engage in um, you know, that pathway for seniors. If we do, and if this happens again, students will have opportunities to get college, um, credits and take college online courses. So I just wanted to, kinda, kinda, kinda how, we, we had some seniors not as engaged with some of their remote learning, um, at least some of the seniors, if we looked at dual enrollment opportunities, just to say, and still, even if we don't go into remote learning, I think dual enrollment's a great opportunities for, uh, for students to get that academic experience, college otherwise. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there in terms of partnerships. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I, I, I agree, and I, I don't know if uh Deputy Superintendent uh Riziro wants to jump in here, but our plan, our plan is to continue offering that as a, as an option uh for students. We've been in touch with uh both Salem State and North Shore, you know, through, you know, since March, uh, and thinking about our planning for next year.
Yes, and we, um, we are expanding our early college programming. Uh, we, Lynn Tech will have a whole business um course that uh the tech students will have access to. Uh, we have, I believe, four, uh, I wanna say four cohorts for Salem State, um, and then North Shore. We, you know, we have the ninth graders last year who will take early college classes as tenth graders, the ninth graders coming in will take early, we, we're expanding it from what we have this year, it'll be expanded next year, and we look to continue to expand that. We're working very closely with Salem State, North Shore around that work.
That's phenomenal. Thank you so much, uh, Deputy Superintendent Riziro.
The questions? Uh, seeing none. Uh, thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. We can go on to the uh, the next uh agenda item, which is uh vote to accept the Lynn Schools Committee's resolution in support of additional federal education funding. We can uh either take a motion or read it or take a motion from someone who'd like to read it, uh, or we can accept it. Uh, I know everyone has it, but um I'd be happy to read it unless one of the other members would like to read it. Okay, I will read it and then we can go, move on. Lynn School Committee Resolution in Support of Increased Federal Support and Stimulus Funding for Public K through twelve Education. Whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic is a monumental and unprecedented challenge emerging quickly and demanding an immediate, immediate overhaul of the instructional plans and strategy of school systems across the country. And whereas the Lynn Public Schools remains committed to ensuring the health and safety of our students and staff, working with students and families to help provide access to basic necessities and delivering high-quality instruction. And whereas um Massachusetts Congressional Delegation, United, United States Senator Elizabeth Warren and United States Senator Edward Maki and United States House of Representatives Member Seth Moulton have advocated strongly for multiple phases of federal relief. And whereas to date, the two thousand employees of the Lynn Public Schools have worked tirelessly to continue to provide seventeen thousand Lynn Public School students and families with access to basic necessities and establish a remote learning program. And whereas the Lynn Public Schools in the City of Lynn have maintained payroll for almost two thousand district employees, providing stability to our community during economic uncertainty. And whereas the Lynn Public Schools, thanks to the frontline bravery and hard work of our essential cafeteria staff, have been, have been providing ten thousand meals per week to students in Lynn since the pandemic's onset. And whereas the challenges due to the COVID nineteen are expected to continue as the virus continues to affect our community and the economic fallout destabilizes funding for public schools. And whereas reputable economists have predicted the end of the nation's economic expansion and forecast recession that may, may be deep and lasting. And whereas any nationwide recession is likely to affect urban areas and their poorest citizens most severely. And whereas the Lynn Public Schools, like urban public school systems across the country, are already incurring and will incur, continue to incur substantial unexpected costs to provide meal services, purchase and deploy digital instru- instructional devices, enable internet access and establish and advance a remote learning management system. And whereas the Lynn Public Schools had expected urgently, urgently needed funding under the Student Opportunity Act of two thousand nineteen to start to address the unneeded fund, the funded needs that the district has to address the higher cost of educating students facing steeper barriers to learning, including English learners and special education students. Whereas the barrier affecting those higher uh need students have been constant, even extended in, in shift term learning. Whereas the Massachusetts General Court is expecting drastic declines in revenue. And whereas it is the time that these, the, these that the nation relies on, during, it is times like these that the nation relies on the federal government's ability to make national investments to shore up the national economy, national infrastructure to respond to national issues. Now therefore let it be resolved that the members of the Lynn School Committee, join with the Superintendent of Schools in support of the Massachusetts Congressional Delegation, Senators Elizabeth Warren and Edward Maki, and House Representative Member Seth Moulton in their advocacy for additional federal education funding for nations' public schools. That is the resolution. Is there a motion? Motion to accept? What's happens? Member Sadowite? Motion to accept. We have a number, we have a couple of motions to accept. Member Sadowite, member Ford, is there seconds? I hear a number of seconds. I hear an almost unanimous seconds, uh, requires a roll call.
Mr. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Caporal? Yes, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Scandary?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes, Amy Amagie?
Yes.
Yes.
Next on agenda is a um vote, uh, uh, motion to uh the Committee on a Resolution in Support of Eradicating Racism, which I will read. Uh, Lynn School Committee Resolution in Support of Eradicating Racism. Whereas recent events have yet again crystallized in our collective view the scour, the scour, scourge of racism and white supremacy in this country. And whereas silence in the face of oppression can rightly be seen as complicity. And whereas inclusiveness is one of the core values of the Lynn Public Schools. And whereas we understand that our students of the Lynn Public Schools, particularly our students of color, deserve to hear that we stand with them in outrage and in solidarity. And whereas we understand, uh, uh, whereas unjustified violence linked to systematic injustice like the killing of George Floyd vibrates throughout society and must be condemned in the strongest terms. And whereas Black Lives Matter. And whereas we understand that oppression touches all aspects of American life, including the experiences of our students and staff in the Lynn Public Schools. And whereas there remains unfinished work in the Lynn Public Schools, including recruiting, supporting, and retaining a diverse staff. Uh, LPS's Strategic Initiative one point three, providing professional development opportunities for all educators focused on trauma, sensitive practices, cultural proficiency, culturally and linguistically responsive instruction, anti-bias curriculum, LPS Strategic Initiative two point two, rethinking school discipline to dismantle the school depression, prison pipeline, eliminating, eliminating gaps in student achievement by race. Uh, LPS Superintendent Student, Student Learning Goal, Ian Moore. And whereas this unfinished work remains a top priority for the Lynn Public Schools. And whereas we greatly appreciate and recognize the tremendous value of the feedback we have received from student and alumni from their experiences in the Lynn Public Schools and from student leaders about their astute recommendations for improvements. Uh, now therefore let it be resolved that the members of the Lynn School Committee hereby recommit ourselves to be hard, to the hard work of eradicating racism in our community. Further resolve that the Lynn Public Schools implement training such as anti-bias, anti-racism, and culturally, cultural competency courses and mandatory, into the mandatory professional development plan for all educators to take. Further resolve that the administrators of the Lynn Public Schools make publicly available tentative plan for professional development for the Lynn Public Schools for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school years by August first of twenty twenty. Further resolve that each secondary school of the Lynn Public Schools organize panels during the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one school year consisting of a diverse group of students, faculty, parents, and alumni, inclusive panels, and that such inclusive, inclusivity panels be dedicated to engaging in topics surrounding implicit biases, recognizing privilege, and the role that cultural identity plays in both America and our educational systems. Further resolve the administration of the Lynn Public Schools make publicly available the tentative schedule for the inclusivity panels by August first of twenty twenty. That is the resolution. Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to accept, please.
A member Sadowite has made a motion to accept. Second.
Can I, can I just say something?
Uh, member Ford would like to comment? Yes, member Ford.
Just, uh, this may be a moot point, but we've got a pretty diverse school population. Should we say all lives matter?
Uh, I think this.
I just think it's.
I would, I would think the statement and support out of member Nicholson, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, um, I, I, I thank uh my, my colleague, Mr. Ford, um, for, for sharing the thought. I think, uh, my experience in, in taking a look at some of these statements, um, in the moment we're in, and the, the violence that we've seen against um black people that has inspired the, the protests that are happening around the country, uh, are calling us to address that specific form of violence. And uh, by saying all lives matter, I think the, the, the idea isn't that all lives matter, the idea is that all lives can't matter until black lives matter. And, and by, by saying that, um, by saying black lives matter, we can stand, we can show our solidarity against the kind of racial oppression that uh people are suffering with. Uh, and unfortunately, the, there are people in this, in this country who have taken that all lives matter as a way to rebut the black lives matter. And, and so it's taken on a life of its own. That's not something that I think that we, as a school committee- committee, would want to be associated with.
Member Sadowite, thank you. Member Sadowite?
And John, have you not been in the community on the comments towards a police station? There's been peaceful protests throughout the city of community members that are trying to say the same things, and as leaders in this community, we need to stand behind them because these aren't just random people. These are our students. These are our teachers. These are our police officers, firefighters. There are people in our community that agree with us, that black lives matter. It's, 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 saying all lives matter would defeat the entire purpose of this resolve that we're attempting to put forward.
I just threw it out there for discussion. You all know I have a black grandson. I believe black lives matter. I just threw it out for discussion.
And there's a motion on the table for acceptance of the resolution as read and amended with Black Lives Matter, with Black Lives Matter. Has the state, is there any other statements from the committee members?
I second it.
There's a second? Um, there's a second. Requires a roll call.
Mr. Passanalis?
Yes.
Mr. Kapala?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Scandell?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Amy Amagie?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is general updates related to the impact of the closure. Dr. Tuttwiler, would you like to, have you already addressed much of that? Would you like to?
I, I, I certainly have.
I think you have, I know it's on the agenda, but I just want to go through it. I know there's been a lot of discussion related to the closure of the summer school and plans for the fall. We have had a lengthy discussions related to all of that, but if you have-
You know-
Or we can move on.
Would you like, I can go through it all again, Mayor, if you would like.
I, I don't think that's necessary.
I do have something I would like to say very, very briefly, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Superintendent.
So next week, we'll bring the school year to a, to a close, and I'm not sure about anybody else, but to me, this has felt like two years. In our profession, there are few things that surprise those of us who've been around for a while. Conversely, I would say that there are a few things by which I've been monumentally surprised this year, and reflecting upon the school year, the global pandemic, the recent and necessary focus on race and equity in our country, there are things happening that I could say, I would say I could have never predicted. I'm not ashamed to say that a few things invigorated me in my college literature courses, sorry, Holy Cross, but there is a quote by Oscar Wilde that sits with me, and I feel it's fitting and appropriate given where we are and where I think we have the potential to go. He says, "Without order, nothing can exist. Without chaos, nothing can evolve." I think we've seen chaos and we're evolving accordingly, and that's a good thing. I'll end with that, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. Member Gaitley?
Dr. Tuttwiler, I can't agree with you more because out of this loss, we're going to all that internet access that we wanted for so many years. So that's a good thing, I think, that we'll be online remotely and students will have all the things that they need to move into the 21st century, and I thank you very much for that, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Yes, indeed. You're most welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. Any other comments, thoughts? I have a question for Attorney
Yes.
So we have two executive session, two agenda items in the executive session. Do, can we go into executive session to address both at the same time, or do we have to go into two separate executive sessions?
Address both at the same time, as long as, sorry, just briefly stated in merger.
Okay, so we, I'm looking for a motion to, to clearly identify both reasons for the executive session. Member Sadowite, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the clerical union, local 1736 Administrative Association, and local 1037 Therapists Union, and to also discuss the strategies with respect to collective bargaining in light of the anticipated state and local budget deficits with school unions since an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee.
There's a motion made in second to go into executive session. Requires a roll call.
Mr. Passanalis?
Yes.
Mr. Kapala?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Scandell?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Sadowite?
Yes.
Yes, and Amagie?
Yes. So we will, we will now go to our executive session. We'll see you on the other side of the, go to meeting. See you in a couple minutes.
...
Mike, Charlie hears the fireworks, he just goes berserk. Charlie, he can't handle it. He hears all those fireworks and it's just, he's up and running like a racehorse.
Did you see Boston's up over fifteen, over a thousand percent of calls on fireworks this year? It's, it's, it's happening everywhere.
Yeah, it's going crazy.
Trying to, trying to deal with here, it's been, it's been crazy.
You can't, how do you even respond? It's like in and out, boom, how do you even, it's so difficult unless they cut them in the act.
Well, we're working on putting a statement out, reiterating that it's illegal and there's, there's fines and so forth. It's a great point, Brian, it's, it, it, it's a challenge when...
Everyone, I have Donna on my, my phone, so we're all here.
All right, we ready to go. Motion to go back into regular session?
I'm moved.
Moved and seconded, roll call?
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Is Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mergane?
Yes. And are we, are we filming, Dawn? Are we recording?
This conference will now be recorded.
Oops. Great.
I'm recording too.
Pubby, you need to vote again. Motion has been made, motion has been made and seconded to go into regular session, roll call?
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Paula?
Yeah.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson? Mr. Nicholson?
He's frozen.
He's frozen. Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mergane?
Yes.
You have a get, Mr. Nicholson? Wait. Somebody?
We have them thirty.
We, 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 we can go, he's back. Jared, to go into a regular session?
Oh? Can you hear us, Jared?
Oh, sorry, the connection just went out, what'd you say?
Uh, we were waiting to see if to go back in the executive session, I mean, sorry, regular session.
We're waiting on your vote.
Yes.
Okay, okay, we'll look in regular session.
Okay.
Any motions to be made? Member Sadoway? Yes, Member Sadoway?
I'd like to make a motion to confirm the votes that we took in executive session pertaining to the votes we took with regards to the collective bargaining with the Clerical Union Local seventeen thirty-six, the Administrative Association, in which we gave a commission, an authority to Superintendent Tuttwiler to further enter into an agreement with them. And I'd also like to approve the local twenty-seven therapist union agreement that was accepted in, in our executive session.
Does that need to be two, there's a, there's a motion and a second, John, John Myhouse, Attorney Myhouse, does that need to be two roll calls? Or can it be one roll call?
One roll, roll call, just to note that it's going to ratify the votes taken in executive session.
Okay.
Ratify the votes taken in the executive session.
Okay, that's, that motion is on, that motion is on the table and seconded, we need a roll call?
Ratified the motion made in executive session, Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Paula?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Okay, uh, everyone has them in their email with regards to the dot loops. We can get these, uh, these signed. So far I have Donna and John. Um, Mayor McGee's?
I don't think what you might go like this time?
Correct, yep. I have Brian Castellanos. I have Jared Nicholson. Lorraine, did you receive it?
Can you hear anybody?
Nobody's. We're waiting for the signatures. Just waiting on Lorraine.
Can't hear anybody. It's not working. Let me go. I'll go back. Please, no, not for one second.
I'll resend it to you, Lorraine, okay?
Yeah. Sorry.
Did you receive the, uh, new email, Lorraine?
I just got it right now, Michael.
Okay, perfect.
So I got two documents I'm signing?
Nope, there's just one.
You what? Okay. You got it? Thank you.
I will double check. I'm checking now, one second. Can you get off of it once you, um, just save it and then get off of it and I'll get the alert because you're still on it?
What?
Go back to that page.
All right.
There we go. Yay. Okay, let me just look at it, make sure we're on the same page and then, um, we'll be done with this, uh, one particular document. Okay, I have all signatures. We're good with it, um, Mr. Mayor. Great. Um, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, seconded. All those in favor, aye? Paul, guys have it?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all. Have a good night. Talk to you soon.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, Donna.